Mr. Emmett, student staff recognition?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have our friends from Charles Wright Elementary School, who are here to tell us about what's happening over at Charles Wright. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Parents, thank you so much for bringing the children out. Students, yeah, it's time to rock and roll. During this time coming back from COVID, it has been really hard for everyone. Because we can't do our big auditorium shows or our monthly meetings in the auditorium. But our teachers have really given themselves to still making memories that the whole building can partake in. And so first, please come up Mrs. Hooky. Mrs. Hooky, who used to be our music teacher, who is now a math tutor, with Mrs. Borselli, our reading consultant, team together to really make Veterans Day a celebration and worth being in school. So here's Mrs. Hooky.
Good evening. I was very pleased about having the opportunity to be involved with our CW Veterans Day celebration as our United States Armed Forces and our freedoms and our American patriotism are near and dear to my heart. On November 11th, Thursday morning, our children arrived at school. And as they approached the building, they were listening to music, music, music. Songs included our National Anthem, The Star-Spangled Banner, This Land Is Your Land, America The Beautiful, My Country Tis Of Thee, God Bless America, and God Bless The USA. It was a day in which we all dressed in red, white, and blue, and also clothing that represented our military. At 8:30, the day officially began with revelry. Students learned revelry is military, is the music, is the military bugle call played at sunrise, signaling time to rise and shine. At 8:45, Mrs. Borselli welcomed some of the students, 25 students, into our media center, along with our two guests of honor, our veterans. And we had an assembly that started. It was a virtual assembly. Mr. Horder had a camera focused on the focal point. And it was, I guess I'll say, piped into the classrooms. Our two veterans, one from Weathersfield, one from Rocky Hill. Mr. John Vining from Weathersfield. He served in the United States Marine Corps from 1961 to 1965. He was stationed in the Far East in countries such as Okinawa, Taiwan, Japan, and Hong Kong. His main duty was communication and embarkation. And he ended his term of duty as a captain. Mr. Franzen from Rocky Hill served in the United States Air Force from 1959 to 1961. He was stationed in Texas, Mississippi, Louisiana, and the Azor Islands in Portugal. His field was electronics. And he was part of a team that was ensuring that at all times, the aircraft were ready for immediate action. He ended his tour of duty as an airman second class. Here we have two pictures of our virtual assembly. The picture on the left is Mr. Franzen standing. And the picture on the right is Mr. Vining, also standing. And let me see, whoops, we'll go one more forward. So you can see there are some children on the floor. There were 25 children that were chosen from each of the seven different grade levels. And there you can see more pictures. The two pictures on the sides, left flank and right flank, are children in the media center. The picture in the center is one of a class of children looking on the smartboard and seeing the assembly virtually. Our veterans answered questions from our students that focused on selfless service and commitment to community and country. Reasons we are a nation marked by freedom and rights. Discipline and self-control, sacrifice, faith, patriotism, and reasons we honor and develop relationships with our veterans. And here we have a wall of honor. You see the bulletin board? It is filled with stars that were decorated by our students. Also stories of relatives of our students. At the end of our virtual assembly, oh, there's more of the bulletin board, the wall of honor. At the end of our virtual assembly, we had a parade. We called it a "thank you walk." On the left, you see Mr. Franzen, followed by Mr. Vining. And if you know Charles Wright School, you know that there's a square that surrounds the media center. And it's very nice for a parade route. All of the children came out of their rooms. So in addition to getting to see our guests of honor virtually, they were able to see them in person. After the assembly, children went back to class. And when they went to lunch, they were treated with an eight-minute video. It was the 2015 National Memorial Day Concert in Washington, DC. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the Armed Forces medley. And the children were able to look at, listen to, and see how the veterans would stand when their song is played. The songs that the children were listening to and watching were the "Kaisans Go Rolling Along," also the Army Goals Rolling Along, the Marines' hymn, also known as "From the Halls of Montezuma," "Ankers Away," the Navy song, "The Wild Blue Yonder," the Air Force song, and "Semper Praetus," our United States Coast Guard song. Then, at dismissal time, before the announcements were made, taps was played. Children learned that it is the last bugle call of Military Day. It is played at dusk, signaling day is done and the lights are to be extinguished. Boxes to Boots is an initiative that the children participated in. It's an initiative in which Charles Wright families collected items such as toiletries, snacks, and games for soldiers serving currently in Poland. Boxes to Boots will be sending the items in the next month. Families donated money, as well as the items requested by the organization. Students learned about Boxes to Boots to help them develop an understanding of the sacrifices made by our servicemen and women. And that was Charles Wright's Celebration of Veterans Day. Thank you.
And then from Veterans Day, we head on to Thanksgiving. And Mr. Sutaro, please come up. Mrs. Olinson, please come up. Do your job, dear. We're doing great. And our fifth-grade students, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Horder just announced, we did a Thanksgiving food drive at Charles Wright. The Thanksgiving food drive has been an annual tradition at Charles Wright School for many years. The civics project is always a wonderful way to show students the difference they can make and the real-life impact they can have on their own community. We prepared for the food drive in advance by explaining the project to our students and building excitement for the cause. Next, we carved out time to have students make posters, decorate collection boxes, and practice the speeches that they would make in each classroom the following week. Allow me to introduce to you Sam, Brooke, and Antonio, who will share the speeches that helped to kick off our food drive at Charles Wright School.
Hello. My name is Sam. Good morning. The Thanksgiving holiday is fast approaching. Many of us will enjoy sharing a beautiful meal with our families. Unfortunately, not everyone in our community will have enough money to buy their family's special dinner. That is why the fifth grade is participating in a special civics project to help families in need.
Hi, my name is Brooke. The fifth graders have kicked off an annual Thanksgiving food drive. We are hoping to collect lots and lots of canned and boxed food items for families in need around Weathersfield. We are also setting a goal of collecting $350 to support these families with grocery store gift cards.
Hi, my name is Antonio. Our food drive runs from now until November 4th. Please ask your parents to donate cans and boxes of food for our cause. Also, please bring in 50 cents or more, which will help to make a big difference for these families. Thank you for supporting this worthwhile cause. Now, here is Ben, who will talk to you about how we went about collecting all these donations. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben. Each week, the fifth graders collected food and money donations from around the school. Ms. Olinson's class collected items from kindergarten, first, and second classrooms, second grade classrooms on Wednesday mornings. Mr. Sutaro's class collected items from third, fourth, and sixth grade classrooms on Thursday mornings. The food was brought back to our classrooms and stored in neat piles. The money was deposited into larger envelopes and kit, envelopes and kept safe by our classroom teachers. Each fifth grader participated in these collection events. And it was a lot of fun. Now here is Dame Lee to talk about a special week that really helped to increase our donations. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dame Lee. In an attempt to promote even more excitement and increased donations, we decided it would be smart to host a Thanksgiving Drive Spirit Week. The fifth-grade teachers drafted a list of special event days and drafted the ideas which were approved by Mr. Horder. Our school security copied the flyers and distributed them to each room. We asked students to consider participating in the special events, which includes bringing in non-perishable foods, items, or small donations each day. We declared Monday, October 25th as Sports Day. Tuesday was School Spirit Day. Wednesday was Hero Day. As you can see, I am dressed as my grandmother, who is my hero. Thursday was Funky Sock Day. And Friday was Hat Day. Now here is Mr. Sutaro, who will give our closing speech. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. The shortened window to fundraise and deliver donations to Weathersfield Social Services this year created some additional challenges for us. But we were committed to making this happen. The continuous influx of donations was very impressive, to say the least. And the pride our students took in this initiative made the project well worth it. This year, we raised a whopping $639.59 and collected 30 boxes, sorted and packed, with just over 496 pounds of food. Many people helped to make this event a big success this year. And we couldn't have done it without their support. What started out with our school's social worker, Mrs. Duffy, getting us information about a deadline for donations, and ended with our room mother, Mrs. Spader, where are you? There she is. Mrs. Spader delivering our food and funds, made for a truly memorable event for our fifth graders can be very proud of. Thank you for this opportunity to allow us to share the success our students found in helping others. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you so much, Charles Wright. Any board members with comments?
Well, I, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say congratulations to the fifth graders. I have a daughter who's in second grade there. And she, your excitement made her excited. And she went scrounging around the entire house. I have to find change. I have to give it to the fifth graders. I have to do this. So, and you guys did an amazing job. And so congratulations. Everything's well worth it. So thank you so much.
I echo your words because it's so exciting to see our children understand what community outreach is. Also, I have to comment that I'm so glad the kids were in school on Veterans Day. They might not say that to me, but I am. Because they learned about the veterans. And that's what's so important. I loved it when you would say, "So do you know why you're home today?" No. And they don't know. And this is a much better way to celebrate Veterans Day. So thank you all who organized that.
Thank you, Ms. Granata. Any others? Mr. Lacavoli?
I just want to say you guys all did really, really well. And you should all be proud of yourself for the cause that you contributed to. And for the fact that you got up there and spoke. I still get afraid to know if they get up and speak. You guys did really well.
Mr. Riley?
Thank you so much for, I mean, for both the Veterans Day celebration and for the food drive. It's great. So hats off to you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Mr. Cassio?
Thank you, Charles Wright. I was a Charles Wright parent as well, a long time ago. So it's great to see the enthusiasm still in that building. Keep it up, and you've got a lot more years to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much, Charles Wright, for coming out. Great job.
Thank you for coming out this evening, everyone. Thank you. Mr. Carey, you have another staff student recognition this evening?
Yes. So the board knows the athletic director forwarded me this email from last week from the Suffield Athletic Director. And the girls' soccer team played Suffield in the second round and sent this the day after. And I just want to make sure we're aware of what great student athletes we have. It says, "Good morning, Superintendent Emmett, Principal O'Connor, and Athletic Director Maltesi. I want to share with you all the wonderful act of sportsmanship and compassion your varsity girls' soccer team showed yesterday prior to the second-round state tournament game. We have a student with special needs who loves to sing the National Anthem for us at our home sporting events. His younger sister is on the JV team, and he's friends with many of the varsity players. Just as we were about to begin, the starting lineups on microphones stopped working. Our student, who was about to sing, began to get upset because he wouldn't be able to sing. Coach Leon and his girls asked if the student would like to come and sing with them instead. He was surrounded by both teams and coaches and was able to sing the National Anthem. The girls and coaches even joined in with him. Coach Leon and his girls could have easily walked away and continued to prepare for the game, but turned what would have been a disappointing end to this child's afternoon into a memory we will all remember. See the photo attached to this email. Thank you, Coach Leon and Athletic Director Maltesi, for helping keep in perspective what high school athletics is about. Creating memories that will last a lifetime. Thank you. Todd Zenzek." I just want to share that as something special that's happening on the field besides playing soccer. Moving on to approval of minutes from November 9, 2021. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any comments or corrections? Mr. Cassio?
Corrections on page one. My wife was at the meeting, but she did not make the motion.
We'll fix that.
Any other corrections? Alan on page, I believe, four, five, somewhere down there. It says, "Ms. Granata requested nomination for vice chair." It was Mr. Emmett. He was still in charge of the meeting at that time.
Great.
Thank you. Any other ones?
I'll take credit.
Seeing none with a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make comment? Yes, Mr. Lesser, who we thought you were taking Tuesday nights off, but you came on down. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
It won't take five minutes. Ken Lesser, 8 Hawthorne Way. And I truly do miss all of you and miss being with you and substitute Tuesday nights for Monday nights. But I did want to talk to you about two things. And one Bobby already said is I want to congratulate the school system and the board for having Veterans Day be an open school day and for the wonderful job that everyone did. Watching the video that Ms. Coco and other staff and students did was so moving. And I almost felt like crying when I watched it. But as the father of three daughters who liked getting that day off and going to the mall, even though Cindy and I would try and tell them the purpose of the day and the reasons for the day. And we did that, but not as successfully as what you did in having Veterans Day open and the kind of things that you taught the kids. So I hope, as you do the calendar in future years, you continue with having Veterans Day a school day. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is to say thank you for serving. This is the season of thanks, Thanksgiving in two days. Thank you for serving. I'm so happy to be working with you, looking forward to working with you, grateful to have an opportunity to work with you. It's great to see all of you up there. I miss you. My seat is taken over there. But also, big thank you to all the administrators who work so hard. Michael on down and all our teachers, staff, and students. It's a tremendous school system and for all you for volunteering your time for the next two years. I think you're going to have a great term, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lesser.
Thanks, Ken.
Anyone else from the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Communications, Mr. Emmett?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. I've got a few items for you this evening. It was a very momentous weekend here in Weathersfield last weekend. We had two of our athletic teams head to state title games. Our girls' field hockey team on Saturday at our own Cottone Field took on Guilford. It's the first time in 41 years that the field hockey team had made the finals. I have to say that for almost three full quarters, they held strong against a very, very talented and deep Guilford team. The final score ended up being four to nothing in favor of Guilford. But I will say, I was extraordinarily impressed with the effort. On Sunday, we gathered up at Dillon Stadium up in Hartford as the Weathersfield Boys Soccer Team took on Fitch High School of Groton. After a scoreless first half, Weathersfield came out and played the game they were capable of playing and ended up with a Class L title after a four-to-one victory. So we're very proud of our athletes. They are not with us this evening because it is soccer banquet night tonight. So I am certainly hopeful at our next board meeting we can honor both of these teams that really, really did us proud over the past weekend. And I have to say, congratulations to all of our athletes. Our girls' swim team did very well in states. We had our volleyball team make the tournament. Our girls' soccer team went to the semifinals. And our cross-country runners and golfers did an exceptional job. So it's been a very good year. With regard to winter sports, they will actually start in earnest next week. The CIAC, along with the Department of Public Health, have now released the guidelines for winter sports, as well as youth sports. I shared the DPH document with Kathy Bagley today for planning purposes for youth sports here in town and our schools. And I know that Mr. Maltesi had a Zoom call today with fellow athletic directors to begin to digest the data with regard to the guidelines. We did have a DPH call today. And again, we're working to interpret these guidelines. The guidelines will begin effective December 23rd, so there will be some overlap time. But it does seek to relax some of the mask mandates with regard to athletes in competition. We will be sure to post this data up on our website tomorrow. And I'll make sure that it is in your Wednesday update, which you will receive tomorrow, so that you can take a look at it. I do expect that there will be changes as we move forward. You've probably seen a rather large uptick in the number of cases we're reporting. And actually, a little later on in the meeting, we'll be talking with Mike Bearabalt, who's a co-liaison for our COVID response, just with the COVID update. At the last meeting, you heard from a parent, the chair of the Project Safe Grad group, Cindy Cruz. I had the opportunity last Tuesday to meet with the Safe Grad Committee. We talked about the challenges of trying to have Safe Grad at Weathersfield High School when the high school is used by us in the event of a rain situation. So, and we use the same exact spaces. So we're looking for alternatives at this point in time. And one thing I want to make sure I let the public know is I learned that Safe Grad needs volunteers, specifically parents of underclassmen to be able to help set up, coordinate with the vendors, and be there while our senior parents are over at the graduation ceremony. So again, I'll be getting out a parent square message to our high school families with Cindy's contact information. But they definitely need additional volunteers. So again, I did say that I would attend upcoming meetings for Safe Grad in spite of the fact it is not a school-based program. It's good for our kids. And it's a good way to send our kids off safely and happily after an excellent graduation ceremony. So beyond that, I just want to make sure that I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. It is hard to believe that tomorrow is a minimum day. And then we will be off for Thanksgiving vacation on Thursday and Friday. Time is moving very quickly. So again, have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And that is communications. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items? There are no action items. Reports and discussion items, COVID update. Mr. Emmett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carey. Mr. Bearabalt will be coming to the podium. We'll talk some numbers with you this evening. And again, as the board was made aware last week, Chloe Bobrowski, our nursing supervisor, is being tapped by the state of Connecticut to take on a position there within the health services arm of the Connecticut Department of Education. So we certainly wish Chloe well. She'll be with us through December 10th, and then she'll transition over to the state. So we're very happy, while we're sad that she's leaving. We're happy that she's going to the state because she provides us an additional resource. When we came forward with the response to COVID, having one individual serve as the liaison to the COVID response, I thought was just too overwhelming. We were faced with the monumental task of coming up with a reopening plan, managing cases, contact tracing, dealing with PPE, making sure that our rooms were well-ventilated. So I made the decision, rather than having one individual, we had co-liaisons. Chloe Bobrowski served as one, and our other is Michael Bearabalt. Mike is our director of security. During the course of the summer, Mike, a retired Southington Police Officer, served in the very same role for the Southington Police Department. So he brought a lot of expertise to the table. So at this point in time, Mike, fill us in. We've seen a big uptick in cases. You want to just?
Yes, we have. Good evening, everybody. So as you can see, we've kind of mirrored in the district what you've seen on the news and everything around the state. We were doing pretty well with cases. They were low at the beginning. But last week, we saw an uptick in cases. There were 15 reported last week. And as Mr. Emmett's reported in the last few weeks, we had several of our cases were all unvaccinated people. This week, we had our first breakthrough cases of vaccinated folks that actually were positive. The flip side of the coin is now that we have a good, our high population of our secondary students that are vaccinated, we don't have to quarantine those folks, so they get to stay in school. The other thing is last week, the state rolled out the screening state program, and I'm sure you've heard of. So that allows our unvaccinated people, especially our kids that are down in the elementary levels that haven't had the opportunity to be vaccinated yet, they can stay in school and continue to learn and not be penalized and leave. Their folks have to sign off on an attestation that they're going to follow the guidelines that are put forward by the state and allows them to remain in school, in the classrooms, and learn instead of being quarantined and put out of the school environment, which is very important. They've been out too long. And our goal is to get them back in. So that's afforded us the opportunity to not have many quarantines. So it's been a positive. Although we did see the uptick, our quarantines are very low. So it's an excellent thing that we have. This week, we started out, we've had a few cases, but not to the level that we saw at the beginning of last week. So I'm hoping that's a good sign. And we get into the holidays, and we come back, and we see minimum things. Additionally, with the five, two, 11-year-olds being able to be vaccinated, we've had some vaccine clinics that happened over at Hartford Healthcare. And a lot of pediatricians are vaccinating and offering the vaccines to those age groups. And we've done a good job in Weathersfield of getting people on board and getting vaccinated. We put the word out, Mr. Emmett puts the word out. And we're hoping, we don't have the numbers yet. There was nothing that we could be provided to us from EOC. But we're hoping that that trend continues in town and it could get us back to normal, to keep the kids in school.
So just some data points. As of this afternoon, we have a total of 97 positive cases since September 2nd. 91 students and six staff members. We reported a total of three positive cases today. And with this aggregate data, this is one of Mike's responsibilities on a daily basis. So he works directly with our school nurses to coordinate this information going up. It is on our website. And every communication that I send out It is on our website, and every communication that I send out, this link is there, so that families can take a look at where we're at. We currently have, in terms of quarantine, a total of 19 students in quarantine. As Mike mentioned, we have implemented the Screen and Stay. To date, from the 10th of November to today, we have had 27 students be able to take advantage of the Screen and Stay, which allows them to remain in school while they're screening for symptoms. The parents do still have the option to quarantine if they wish, as you know, in an effort to get kids back as quickly as possible. We moved from the 10-day quarantine down to the seven-day quarantine, and that requires a negative test after day five. So some parents have still continued to take advantage of that. With regard to the vaccines, as Mike mentioned, we have definitely seen the impact of the vaccinations on our numbers. Right now, as of today, the number of breakthrough cases, we're at about 10% of our cases have been breakthrough. Every other case has been unvaccinated or partially vaccinated. From a town perspective, the town as of last Thursday continues to be in the yellow alert level. That's two below the highest, which is red alert. I will say that we were at 9.9 cases per 100,000, and the threshold to go to level orange is 10. I would certainly believe that this coming week, when they release the data, which will be on Friday of this week, that we will have shifted back up into orange alert. I do want to say also, you know, we chart very carefully where we see the spread. Earlier in the year, we definitely thought that we had an outbreak that was based over at Silas Dean. It was one thing that we reached out to the Department of Public Health on. What we're finding over the past two weeks is a lot of spread within families. So it's a sibling gets it one day, and then three days later, another sibling gets it, and it's going through the family. The other thing I would strongly urge at this point in time is, we get the five to elevens vaccinated. Over the past two weeks, how many sleepovers? We've had multiple sleepovers, unfortunately, where we're socializing, and then the sleepover ends early because of symptoms, and then...
We're getting very good at contact tracing and finding out where it came from. And the positive part, as Mr. Emmett echoed, our mitigation strategies and our mask compliance within our schools is fantastic. So it's keeping school spread at a very, very minimum. We just don't have it. It's within the home, it's the sleepover, it's the Halloween party. That's where we're seeing our transmission come from, not within our schools. So our teachers, our staff, administrators doing a great job of our mitigating strategies within our school, distance, mask, everything that needs to be done to keep our kids safe.
So Mike, can you talk a little bit about, I know PPE, you've been, you know, you've gone to the state before to get masks and hand sanitizer. Where are we with regard to PPE?
So we actually had to order some more masks. We had a very large surplus at the beginning of this year, but what's happening is, we sent out communications home via principals to each school, was kids weren't coming in with masks, so we were providing a bunch of them to them as they come in, and they're getting disposed of in some way. So we just asked for parents' help. Hey, if you can get a mask in with your child, that's great, because we're going through them. So we did order more. Our own health department was fantastic. I reached out to them, and they gave me another case of masks, too, to help us get through until our order came in. So I'm trying to grab them where I can, but we are going through a lot of masks, so we've asked for the parents and everybody's help. Hey, if you can send a mask in with your child, it really will help us out. It's their own personal mask. If one breaks or they forget, not a problem, we have it there for them. But please send your child in with a mask, and it'll help us out a lot, too, because everybody's still ordering them. We're not out of the pandemic yet, so the pediatric masks for the little ones were harder to come by, so we only got half our shipment in. So we're still working, we will supply them if we need to, we want them to be safe, but if we can ask that help from the folks at home, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And then, again, I think just from a data standpoint here, so everybody knows, I think where we're at right now, we're seeing the wave, it's still the Delta variant, we're not seeing anything different. I'm hopeful that we'll hit the peak relatively quickly, and then we'll begin to come back down. Our mitigation strategies have been strong and consistent. Obviously, I know that the big question is, how much longer for the masks? We had our DPH call today, that question was raised, and at this point in time, it's something that the DPH is talking about with the governor's office. Right now, the executive order remains in place, and I have to say, for the most part, the compliance is really good. I will say, at the high school level, I tend to find many high school students with exposed noses. They're good with the mouths, but they're down below the noses. So we're just, you know, continuing to remind our students with regard to that. And again, I want to reiterate, too, with regard to the vaccines, there was some question when I had sent out a recent communication around the vaccination clinic, that I was somehow mandating the vaccine. I'm not mandating the vaccine, but I will tell you, I recommend it. I recommend it based upon the information I hear from CDC, from the Department of Public Health, from the Director of the Central Connecticut Health District. So it is clear from our data over the past year and a half now, that it has had a positive impact, certainly from a staff perspective. Many, many fewer quarantines of staff and many fewer cases. As Mike said, with regard to the data for five to 11, the state has not yet released that data. I'm not anticipating that the state will release that data until the second round of shots have gone out. So right now, I can tell you, as of last Thursday, 69.57% of our 12- to 17-year-olds here in Weathersfield have been fully vaccinated. So we're moving in a good direction. And I think the number was approximately 74% had at least the first dose. So we are moving closer to a direction where we're, you know, we're gonna have more kids protected. So again, with the Hartford Healthcare Clinic, as Mike said, we had a clinic previously, not last Saturday, the Saturday before. The next clinic will be coming up, I believe it's December 4th, first Saturday in December for round two. So, and again, any opportunity you can get to get the vaccine, CVSs are, and some other pharmacies are offering it, as well as, Mike said, pediatricians. And from a staffing perspective, we are covered workers, so we are all eligible to receive the booster. We heard that again today at the DPH, that the boosters are widely available. I will readily admit, I got my booster, it'll be two weeks ago on Saturday, so right at a CVS. So staff members are strongly encouraged, if you have not done so yet, get your booster. And again, Mike, I just have to say, thanks very much for your persistence with this. It has been a long road. We're not done with it yet, but I certainly think we're moving in a good direction, and I am absolutely thrilled. We have our students in five days a week. So we have not had to close a school, and that is a step in the right direction compared to last year. So. Any questions, board members?
I have one question.
Yes, Ms. Drew.
When do you, first of all, thank you so much for everything that you do. And my daughter is actually one of them that sometimes forgets her mask, so I apologize.
It happens, no. It happens, it happens.
So, but when do you think that you're gonna get the, what percentage we are for the five to 11 in regards to the shot?
Like Mr. Emmett said, it's probably not gonna be given to us until after the second round would come into play. So December 4th, with the first clinic that would happen, December 4th would be them to get their second shot. So what they generally do is, they'll provide that information to our Department of Health and the EOC meeting that Mr. Emmett attends. He gives us the updates, and he can break it down as far as town and stuff like that, too.
Okay. They'll report to you how many of our children went to Hartford Healthcare at all, or no?
No, because they, the last few times that we've had it, at the beginning, when it was just our teachers, we could break it down, because it was kind of specific. This is open to anybody and everybody, this isn't specific to us. It's a clinic for anybody, so they don't provide that data to us right now. But our health department will get that down the road, and they'll be town-specific. So we'll have that data eventually. And we've done a fantastic job, as Mr. Emmett said, even opposed to our surrounding towns that was in the same health district. Our numbers for vaccination have been the highest consistently of any of the towns. So let's hope that keeps it up, and we can keep moving forward. It's been a very positive thing here.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members with questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Moving on to meetings held, the Crec Council meeting was held on 11/17/2021 at 11:30 in the morning. Ms. Granato.
Okay, the Crec Council met on Wednesday, November 17. The Crec Council is the Capital Region Education Council, of which Weathersfield is a member along with 35 other surrounding towns. And the council is responsible for the regional magnet schools and project choice. They have organized and worked the Hartford Head Start. Our meeting started with a presentation to the council on Crec operations. Their operations include transportation, food services, construction, security services, facility services, and tech services. Committee reports on the legislature, finance, and Crec Foundation followed, and the consent agenda was voted on and improved for the 2021-22 continuing programs and entitlement grants. The Executive Director, Greg Florio, spoke on the governor's visit to Crec schools on tuition issues, Crec's job fair, and the Cabe-Crec Conference. And two conference goers from Weathersfield were Chuck Carey and Michael Emmett. I requested this tuition letter that was sent out by Greg Florio to the member in Crec towns. I asked that it also be sent to the Crec Council members. Tuition reimbursement is by the state, and there is a low percentage of it. The council chair, Lydia Tadone, welcomed new members and discussed the recent Cabe-Crec Conference. And deliberate action was on the new contract for transportation. With this new contract, they hope to work with bus drivers and avoid shortages and disruption in routes. The legislative updates were by Patrice McCarthy, who encouraged districts to contact their legislators to discuss their support for this session's education bills. Upcoming session starts on February 9th, 2022, and adjourns on May 4th, 2022. More details on this Crec meeting will soon be found on their website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Finance and Operations Committee meeting held 11/23/21 at 6:00 p.m. Ms. Drew.
Mine will be just a little bit shorter. So currently, we are on target for our budget for this fiscal year, and we also discussed the transportation RFP that is out, and that Mr. Emmett and Mr. Kazaka will be opening up the bids in the superintendent's conference room on December 20th. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit more information about that as our budget season is about to open into full swing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. No meetings scheduled, there's no unfinished business. Public comment? Anyone from the other question to make comment?
Come on up again, Ken.
There's no public comment, public comment is closed. Board comment, any members of the board wishing to make comment? Ms. Granato.
Yeah, I have quite a few meetings here that these committees meet and are very important to our students and families. The first one was the Hunger Action Team for Weathersfield met on Friday, November 12th in a Zoom meeting. There was a great conversation about a recent Weathersfield Life article, and the article featured our own Ken Lesser, Deborah Cohen, and the need for HAT because of the food insecurity in our town. Weathersfield Social and Youth Services is ready for Thanksgiving with a meal program that saw the generosity of our citizens with food drives and monetary gifts. Social Services is working on their holiday gift program, continuing work on Food Bank, and there's an energy assistance. The American Rescue Plan Act, planning is in the beginning stages. Discussions include town department heads, town manager, and town council. An important group, the Dazzling Dozen, will be working to provide a monthly food drive by a town organization. The Weathersfield Public Schools have the month of May. And Weathersfield High School is working on drives, let's tackle hunger, health and beauty drives, and spread the love work. Exceptional lessons for our students learning about community outreach. Please continue to generously give to HAT, especially during the holidays, and for more detailed information, please check their website for info. And the Keen for Kids met on Thursday, November 18th with a Zoom meeting. The Keen for Kids is generously sponsoring and organizing our after-school programs. Caroline Fazina is the coordinator of this incredible work. She reported that she will be using Weathersfield Public School family liaisons to get info to all families. There is a gap in communication because parents of very young students have not experienced many days in school, and it's all because of the pandemic. So she's hoping to communicate with them. Caroline also reported that there are 565 enrollments this fall. A new class on coding is being introduced in the winter session. And Weathersfield Public School IT is assisting with Chromebooks that are older but usable. There will be a musical sponsored by Keen at the Webb Elementary School this spring. Cindy Lesser will be, you might as well stay here. Cindy Lesser will be the director of The Wizard of Oz, a truly great experience for our students. Continuing here. The hands-on learning science curriculum, also sponsored by Keen, has started in our sixth grades in all schools. This is a very exciting hands-on science program that is worked on during the school day. The plan is for all grades K through eight to participate. And when I sat there through this meeting and heard this, the quote always came to mind by Benjamin Franklin, "Teach me and I forget, teach me and I, tell me and I forget, teach me and I remember, involve me and I learn." We continue with the Park and Rec is working on athletics in our elementary schools, and there's even a before-school exercising at High Crest. The library has a new children's librarian who is expected to start soon, and Keen is thrilled to announce that their fundraising has started again. The Lumineers will be their holiday fundraiser. Please contact Weathersfield Travel for your holiday candles. And last of these very important committee meetings, the Weathersfield Education Foundation will be meeting on Wednesday, December 1st at the Country Club. This is the annual meeting for the foundation. New officers will be elected, and if anyone is interested in serving on its board or working for the foundation, should get in touch through the website. The foundation's mission is to enhance and enrich the Weathersfield Public School curriculum. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna continue with my closing remarks. This is the closing remarks of my closing remarks. I want to comment on the stress that this post-pandemic time has put on our teachers. And whenever there's a problem, let's all work for a solution. This is the second time during this COVID pandemic that the concern that our staff is under tremendous strain and stress has been communicated. And we know that there are very few of us who have been untouched by this emotional, physical, and mental health challenges that exist because of this pandemic. My concern, and my reason I am bringing up this issue of teacher stress again, is, our teachers are the people who will get us out of this post-pandemic education crisis. We must let them do exactly that. And I want our students working with our multi-degreed, dedicated, and hopefully not-stressed teachers, who are able to put their best effort forward at this most challenging of times. I look for our educators not to be tense and stressed, but to be working with our students with their immense talents, knowledge, and confidence. The most important answer to our post-pandemic education crisis is working on our philosophy of management. The leader-leader philosophy for how to manage people is Weathersfield Public Schools' philosophy. We have been, and hopefully are, continuing to utilize Lyle Kirkman as a systems leadership consultant. This leadership model is being implemented in many businesses and schools across the country. And I can even have a brief quote from Lyle, quote, "The time has come to unleash the power of teachers." This is the most important solution that we have for the Weathersfield Public Schools' problems now and for the future. Teachers must be the loudest voices in our school, and they must be heard. Give them the support, and let them use their voices as we designed for them by using our strategic plan and this leadership model. I believe if we do exactly that, we would all be hearing our classroom educators' concerns, and together, we would be solving these problems. And who benefits the most? Our students. I am so pleased that Amanda Drew, our new committee chair for Human Resources and Personnel, has called a meeting to look at the problem in the lack of subs and pairs in our school. We must hear from our teachers on possible solutions to our serious post-pandemic educational problems. And I'm also pleased that after Thanksgiving at a board meeting, there will be a presentation of the leader-leader management philosophy, a most important presentation for our Weathersfield Public School community at this trying time. So I thank you for listening. We need all of us to understand this. So I thank you for listening. We need all of us to understand this post-pandemic crisis and work together to find solutions. And I also want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Any other board members with comments? Mr. Akavoli.
Thank you, Chuck. So continuing along with themes of committees and teachers, I also want to thank Amanda Drew, board member, for taking the lead in bringing a committee meeting together concerning things that are going on with staffing, whether it's teachers, subs, paras, who all affect our students. I think it's really important that we have a meeting to discuss what's going on with our staff and their stress levels, and how they're feeling burnt out, and how they're being relied upon for much more than they ever expected to be, and how we really just need to back them up and see how we can support them as good as possible so they can do their job and teach our children. I can tell you firsthand that I've been hearing these concerns since I started campaigning in July, and it hasn't stopped. I've been hearing from friends with children in the district. I heard from teachers directly. I heard from parents, and they're all concerned that the teachers are feeling too burnt out. They're feeling like they're being relied upon for more than they ever imagined, and they're just getting stressed out. And we all know how people work when they're stressed out. They're not as good as they possibly can be. It's becoming an issue, and I think we need to get in front of it. A large part of the reason that I'm up here is to be an advocate for one students and one A teachers. And if both groups aren't doing as well as possible, I think it's our job as a board to find solutions and resources to help both groups. Now, usually, resources is code for money, and I know there's not a lot of that just sitting around, but it would be great if we could find some, along with creative ideas to put towards this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Akavoli. Mr. Riley.
Well, to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I wanted to welcome the new board members that we have, Amanda, Jennifer, Janice, and Matt. So thank you for joining us. And I also wanted to mention that we did have a building tour that a lot of the board members attended. The schools are, you know, they're tired. They're going to need replacement. These are the elementary schools. But I will have to say that everything is well-maintained as it can be, and all the schools seem to be spotless. So it was, you know, I think they're doing the best they can.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Hi. I'd just like to echo what Bobby and Matt have said about having the meeting, Amanda, on the Human Resources and Personnel Committee. We have heard about the shortage of paras and substitutes, and that often, when there aren't enough subs, support staff are taken to fill in the places. And we would like to come up with a solution to have more of the substitutes available, and also to fill the para positions. Without a sufficient number of paras, as we all know, teachers must add to their already daunting list of responsibilities and tasks, as well as struggle with ways, finding ways to meet individual needs. So the lack of paras, like the lack of subs, is eventually counterproductive. So it's a timely, impressive need. So thank you. And we've also talked about teacher stress. And just to echo a bit of what Bobby said, it's just so important to listen to the teachers when they talk about their situation and how they're feeling, and believe them, and respond in a timely manner. These are dedicated, professional people, and we want to make sure that we keep all the good people that we have, and that they are motivated and enthusiastic about continuing to teach.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cassia.
Thank you, Chuck. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Wish you all the best, and we have a lot to be grateful for. So thank you. Also, there's our annual football rival game on Wednesday night. And I believe it's in Newington.
In Newington this year.
In Newington. Not at Central, but at Newington.
Newington High School.
Newington High School. So we've got a great team, a good group of coaches. I wish them all well, and go Weathersfield.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Congratulations to the boys soccer team. It was a great game. I was able to attend with my youngest daughter. The field hockey game I was at, it was a tough loss, but what a great season. So I'm thankful, we're thankful for all that hard work of all the players and coaches. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.